Item number 10, conduct of business. First is item A. Receive report and provide direction regarding design and maintenance for the Posey Park water feature landscape and lighting improvements associated with the San Bruno grade separation project.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're returning to you tonight, as we said we would at the last city council meeting, to follow up on a couple of remaining items of decision making and one information item that the city council requested related to the planned improvements and features at Posey Park along First Avenue and the lighting under the overcrossing that is rapidly becoming a project taking shape at our grade separation in San Bruno Avenue and along the rail line in San Bruno. Specifically, the city council is being asked tonight to render a final decision in order that the project can continue to move forward undelayed towards its final completion at the end of this calendar year on a couple of items, and I'm going to leave it to Mark Simon of the Joint Powers Board to give you a little bit more detail on those specific items and the specific decision making being asked of the council. In summary, it is to confirm the east side landscape treatment along First Avenue, along the wall and the planter area adjacent to the wall. Let me back up and say that at your last council meeting, I think the council made a fair amount of progress towards a number of other issues of decision making, but did ask for a little bit more clarity about some of these features so that you know precisely what it is that you're being asked to approve. So it's with that in mind that we're returning to you tonight. It's with that little bit more information, and Mr. Simon will give you a little bit more detail. The second topic is the water feature that has long been anticipated as a prominent amenity in the relocated Posey Park, and again, Mr. Simon will walk through exactly what the features of that amenity are. And then, thirdly, you're being asked tonight to confirm and give final approval to the lighting treatment on the undercrossing at San Bruno Avenue directly under the station platform. The last item that the city council requested additional information about, and I'd like to just speak for a moment to that, is the anticipated cost and method or the game plan, if you will, for maintenance of these new improved features once the grade separation project is finally completed and turned over as a finished product to the city of San Bruno, or rather, certain elements of that. At Posey Park, there is an interest to understand what it will take for the city to take over maintenance of the water feature, and similarly, the city council was interested in understanding what the potential cost and game plan for maintaining into the long term the landscaping improvements at Posey Park. I need to point out to you that pursuant to our agreement with the JPB, the city will also assume responsibility for landscape maintenance along First Avenue. This is an agreement that was entered back in 2010 that sets forth the responsibilities of both the JPB as well as the city of San Bruno as related to long-term maintenance of the various improvements, and in an interest to assure that this area was landscaped in an appealing and sensitive-to-the-neighborhood manner and to assure that it would receive an adequate or reasonable level of maintenance attention, our agreement was that the city of San Bruno would assume that responsibility. As the written report in your agenda materials for tonight indicates, staff has done some research and developed information that identifies to the best of our current knowledge and understanding of both what the improvements consist of and what will likely be required in order to keep them in a reasonable shape of maintenance. We are estimating a total of approximately $66,000. That amount is, I'm sorry, it's approximately $78,000, my mistake, assuming a water feature at Posey Park. Staff's specific recommendation is that that feature would best be turned over to a contractor with expertise in pool and/or fountain maintenance in order to assure that not only is the water quality, but the pumps and various structures of the water feature are maintained in a manner that makes us continue to be proud and view this as an amenity in Posey Park. In addition, staff needs to let you know that, as we have discussed on a few previous occasions, our parks and grounds maintenance staff in the Community Services Department has a full plate of work associated with ballfields, parks, and other city facility maintenance operations already in our work program, and does not believe that the additional workload associated with this additional landscaped area is, and again, remembering that Posey Park before its renovation, in its previous location and its previous status adjacent to Artichoke Joe's at the intersection of Huntington and San Mateo Avenues, frankly, didn't receive a lot of maintenance attention. It had a few very large mature trees, a couple of benches, and some not very attractive-looking landscaping, which frankly was intended not to require a lot of attention, and over a period of time, had not been receiving it. So our estimate in terms of costs at just over $78,000 assumes maintenance to landscape features to be provided by a part-time adjunct staff person in a way that we perform seasonal maintenance activities. We staff up a bit in this time of year when weed abatement and other pre-fire season activities are needing to be performed. Similarly, we staff up in the winter for storm drain maintenance and sandbag production in the Public Services Corporation yard area. So similarly, we would anticipate in this budget or estimate amount is based on part-time staff hours that would be necessary in addition to supplement the additional workforce to perform these additional job responsibilities.
A quick question. What do we do for maintenance of the pool, the pumps, the systems there?
Most of that, the routine maintenance is performed by staff. Specialized maintenance work for pump repair, when I say routine maintenance, I'm talking about things like checking the water levels and brushing, keeping leaves out of the pool. But the other more technical maintenance activities, pump maintenance, et cetera, is typically performed outsourced by contract.
Yeah, just a thought that maybe we could, with the economy of scales, save some money on both by using the same contractor.
Using the same contractors.
Same kind of thing, one's moving, one's not.
Yeah, I'll tell you, just for the purposes of getting a reasonable estimate, we did consult with Archstone, actually, because they have a similar kind of large water feature. We thought that we could get an idea from them, but certainly, that's a good idea, and it may produce a cost-effective result for us. So with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Simon to walk through the improvements and the specifics of the features that the JPB would be completing and then turning over to us and allow you to ask any questions and hopefully render a final determination.
Thank you. Good evening. As you can see, and just for the sake of the permanent record, we did provide this material to the city last week, and I believe the council was given a chance to see these things in print in addition to what's on the screen. And you could see some various, one of the things you asked for, which struck us all as eminently reasonable, was drawings of the water feature that gave us a better idea of what it was and what it looked like and the scope. So we have a series of those now to show you how it will work. There's a shot from above. You can see that it sort of flows down a series of steps, and there are also this series of spring-like fountains all across the back wall, and it all recirculates. The water recirculates, so it's a sort of a continuous flow of water. So that gives you an idea. And then we have some slides to show what it would look like if it was landscaped. And it would be landscaping that isn't all that dissimilar to what we've been showing, where the water feature would have been on the east side, but is now also landscaped. It's really up to you. Because of where we are with the construction of Posey Park, this is something we kind of need to decide now. I've tried to reduce the number of things I bring to you and say you must decide now, and this is the only one, tonight. God knows what might come in two weeks, but it's really a question of what's the council's pleasure, recognizing that the cost of the maintenance is something the city will have to incur.
All right. Michael?
So what's behind those? Is that just like a little grassy area behind the ramp?
You mean on the far right where the tree is?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, there's some grass there, some of the similar kind of grass.
Is there a sliver of grass that goes all the way up, or is there?
Like that? Yes.
Okay, so someone could go up into that area.
Sure. You know, it's an interesting dilemma. You want this to be a place that people want to go to and use and even interact with, but not to the point where they love it to death or create additional, what's the ever-present law of unintended consequences?
Can I ask, not to get away from the water feature, but has the grass in the middle always been there?
In the middle.
I vaguely remember that.
You mean where the trees are in that area right in the middle?
Past renderings of Posey Park, that it was all paving.
Well, I think this has always been the design.
Really?
Yeah, I think maybe the difference is that we're getting a better sense of what the landscape is going to look like, and so we're providing you a more complete picture. But I believe it's always been designed to be not all cement or paving.
And then the pavement is just, is different colors.
Right.
Michael?
Okay, so we have staff's estimate on the maintenance cost of this, and it sounds like it's something that the maintenance of this would be beyond the ability of our current staff. But are we getting a strong recommendation here that we should not do this, or just a caution that if we were to do it, then it wouldn't be with our current staffing level?
It's the latter. It's the caution that it would not be with our current staffing levels, that it would not be practical to assure you that we could assume this workload and perform it responsibly. Staff did not make a specific recommendation in the report. I think that staff's considerations about, at the last council meeting, there was a fair amount of discussion about, is this going to be actually more like a fountain where there's, you know, potential for water blowing all over everywhere? Doesn't really look like it is, that that is likely to be a huge problem, or water blowing out into the pavement area and creating a slipping hazard. I think those types of issues have, our minds have been relieved about that. I would say staff's opinion is that the features as presented are very nice and that this would be a terrific amenity. It's really up to the council's decision-making whether you think that it is, given the cost and given the logistics of the maintenance of it, whether this is something that the city can reasonably manage in a, so that it stays a nice amenity. And I think that would be, that's really the biggest consideration we need to make tonight.
I really think that the water adds a lot to the appearance of the area, and if it doesn't seem like the maintenance is going to be cost prohibitive, although it will be a jump in what we're currently doing, I think that this is, I think that we should definitely pursue the water feature. It looks, to me, it looks like it was designed to have water, and with the grass in it, it just looks like a fountain that's got grass in it, so let's put water in it.
Irene?
I just want to be really clear. I want everyone to be really clear. The cost of maintaining the fountain itself is only roughly $12,000. So my understanding is the cost of maintaining everything else is going to be $60-plus thousand. So regardless of, regardless if we do the fountain or not, we're still looking at $60-plus thousand dollars of maintenance per year that we are going to have to do. Okay, just so that's clear. I was originally against the fountain, to tell you the truth. I hadn't had a clear picture of what it would look like, and I am relieved, I am relieved too, that it's not water shooting really high up and that the wind's going to push it onto the walkway and all those things. I really appreciate looking at the curve and how it all works together. So as long as we, as a council, understand we're going to have to up our ante as far as maintenance goes, I'm all for it.
Here you go.
We just had a budget study session, so obviously there's time to take care of any of those issues that may arise from a decision tonight. As I was at the last meeting, I was in favor of the water feature. I still am tonight. The pictures do help. And then I know the other item was to confirm the First Avenue landscaping. I know, and it's just for my peace of mind, maybe I've been up here a little bit or something or a couple of meetings, I've never recalled of us being up here, other than, I'm going to acknowledge that that's what's being told to us, of course, and that's what it was, but that was more the subcommittee. I don't remember that coming up to us, making that decision one versus the other. That's just my memory. But I will acknowledge that that information has come up, and I would say absolutely yes on the water feature. I like the mayor's comment about looking to the vendor that services may be the pool's needs and see if that can be coordinated. And was there a third thing that we were looking for tonight?
I just thought we'd take it one thing at a time. The city manager laid out the, we'll get to the east side landscaping in a moment. I just thought we'd try.
You just want the water feature? Yes.
And Ken? Was that a yes earlier?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, 10 years ago, when the Citizens Advisory Committee first viewed the designer's proposal for Posey Park, we all sort of gasped and said, wow, who's going to pay for that? And we were cautious because, yeah, let's go for it, but, you know, and we know we'd have to answer the question someday, you know, how is that going to affect the budget in just the overall getting it constructed and then obviously the ongoing maintenance? And we went, you know, the consensus was to, you know, was to keep it. My only concern was, you know, how was the feature going to be water-like, you know? It had water, we knew it had water in it, but this gives it a lot more credibility to show that, you know, now you're going to be able to hear it, you'll be able to see it better. We really, I've always liked the plaza, the Posey Park Plaza area, and I think any criticism about or argument about maintenance is like, we haven't maintained this part of the city in my memory. I mean, we can talk about First Avenue, we can talk about Posey Park, we can talk about that whole area, and we haven't invested any, you know, any maintenance funds in that area. And that just goes with, you know, with progress and improvements, and I think, well, we're going to have to find a way. So yes.
Yes, and I also agree with the water feature, something we've worked on for, I think it's longer than 10 years, but.
Can't think back that.
Yeah, right, exactly. So I agree with the comments from the rest of the council. We're going to have to maintain the area anyway, but it adds a little spark to that whole area and a little light. So I think you have your direction.
Great. Thank you. You know, I just want to tell you, as you drive up and down the peninsula and look at grade separations that we built, there's nothing like this anywhere else. You should be very proud of where we ended up, and it took a long time for us to get where we are, including taking a long time to show you what it would look like. But we've had as a goal from the beginning to do something that sets San Bruno apart and really makes a statement about the kind of community it is. And I'm thrilled that you've made this decision. I think you've made the kind of decision you set out to make, and I congratulate you for it. If we can go on to the east side landscaping, and just for the sake of the permanent record, the grade separation doesn't just stop like that. This is just some examples of some of the trees we'll plant. You can see a side view, there'll be landscaping on the, I don't know how to describe it, the area, the slopes down, slope, the slope, and also a strip of landscaping between the pedestrian sidewalk and where the grade separation berm begins. There's some more. This is an idea of what it looks like on First Avenue. You can see there's quite an extensive bit of landscaping. All the shrubs and all the trees and all the vegetation has been done in accordance with the requirements of the city and its own Parks Department, I forget which, is it the Parks Department, am I right? Yeah. In other words, these are all city-approved, city-required vegetation.
Can I ask a question? Some of your drawings, you're showing smooth surface, and some of the drawings, some of the renderings, you're showing the same material as on the grade separation, so is it mixed?
You mean on the walls themselves?
The walls, on the little retaining walls themselves.
They'll all be the same, right? Are they all going to have the MSE?
You can.
It's a smooth finish.
On the retaining walls, it's a smooth finish?
Okay, so if you back up, you back up, one more. Yeah, so what's that? Gotcha.
Something we wish we hadn't done. You know, when you do these things in a hurry, sometimes you're doing them in ways you wish you had.
I better catch everything.
I will just, I will just jump in, it's your option. If you will express your desire that you want the same texture on that lower wall, certainly would be no issue with JPB to implement.
To the chair, on the wall, on the smooth surface, unfortunately, because Vice Mayor showed me some pictures this evening of graffiti, and all I thought was smooth canvas for somebody to want to go, unfortunately, and we know what they do. So would the smooth surface be better, or the one that we didn't think was in there, that Councilman Iber found, and would that be more of a deterrent to that possibility? I don't know.
I actually have not spent my time plumbing the depths of thinking that goes on in people who spray paint graffiti.
Irene?
I would guess, and just from anecdotal things that I've heard around places, that the rough is less, people are less inclined to spray paint rough surfaces because the, you know, the, what they are spray painting doesn't show up as well. So I would guess that that, and you guys have had more experience with graffiti throughout, does it matter?
Well, we're going to have our graffiti expert come and figure that out now.
And Councilman Medina?
Yes.
I did give the pictures to Mr. Simon, and he is going to take care of it busy night.
In fact, it will be taken care of within the next.
On your way home.
Well, I've got some spray paint in the car.
So you're absolutely correct, and this is obviously non-scientific polling data here, but yes, you're correct, the rough finish seems to discourage it a little bit. Problem is, is when somebody does, it's harder to deal with. So the advantage of a smooth wall is that you can paint it and you can readily repaint it. The advantage of the rough face is that they're less likely to paint it in the first place. So it's, there's not a real good, perfect answer for you on that.
Is it possible, does anyone have any idea about the landscaping, that possibly the landscaping would spill over that wall?
Ivory or something?
Yeah, well, I think some of it is growing up on the back wall.
Right.
Yeah, you know, the real issue here is less to do with that than just the general scheme of the landscaping. Because it's landscaping, we can make decisions about it very late in the process. That is not something we have to decide right now. So if it's the council's preference that we try to find some way to cover that wall with growing stuff, with growth, we can certainly work with the city on doing that.
I would, I would think in general, anything that would discourage graffiti would be advantageous, so.
So, yeah, we can do that. Just, hopefully, we're just getting sort of your sign off on the way it looks, the general design of it.
And this being in the subcommittee with the mayor, this is, we spent a lot of time and effort in preserving or even enhancing and improving the view from the First Avenue homes, and this, we did have a lot of cross-sections, a lot of elevations of this nature, and so this is what, this is what we're accustomed to.
Right. Instead of one huge wall, it's terrace back and terrace up, so I think it's good.
If I can jump in for your clarification, the subcommittee and you saw a concept driving and cross-section at that time, when this project and the maintenance agreement and operation agreement was approved by you, at that time, the assumption was that the second two tracks will be the next phase. And that's the reason why you never saw a finalized design on the east side. You always just saw a conceptual design on the east side with the promise that before the east side will be finalized and implemented, you will have the opportunity to comment on and to make a decision.
But 10 years ago, we were looking at a two-track design, and this is what we saw.
Irene? Thank you. I have one more question. I'm a little confused about the parking that shows here. Are we adding to the width of, are you adding to the width of the street and then putting and then making parking like that, or is the width of the street going to be the same as it is now, and that's just lines for parking, or is that just a concept somebody threw out there? Am I being clear about the question? Because from here, it looks like you're adding width to us, for us.
Right, no, that's a good question. No, it is the same overall width.
Okay.
At First Ave, the sidewalk that you're seeing on the, would be the west side, that's wider in that that's actually on JPB property.
Okay.
So from that point of view, it's a little bit wider, because there is currently no sidewalk on that.
Right.
On that side. But the, yeah, the striping was put in there just to sort of illustrate, you know, rather than stack up a whole bunch of cars. I mean, we can stripe it or not stripe it, obviously, but the intent was to delineate them. Currently, it's not delineated. Currently, the parking is just along the curbside.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So the way this picture is shown, it looks like there's a pocket, a parking pocket, that is actually what you're building or not?
I'm sorry, you're referring to the, yeah, I can show it on plan view.
On the plan view.
Yeah, so there you go. Hopefully, that answers your question. Yes, so to answer your question, there is a portion that is recessed in somewhat that comes in further to the west, and that's where the parking is. So you don't see that strip running the whole length along First Avenue.
Okay. Right, but right now, the length of First Avenue is straight on both sides, so that indent looks like it might be a little bit of additional space in the roadway. So that, that indent looks like it might be a little bit of additional space in the roadway. No?
Yeah, I think it's because we, it's actually on the right of way. It's on our property and just making...
So that was my question. That at least for a little space there, it looks like it is inserting itself into the right of way.
Okay.
Is that, is that a fair statement?
So there's still parking on the other area.
Right. Yeah, my, I guess my underlying question is, you're not taking away the width of the street and you're not taking away parking?
No.
Okay, that, that's the bottom line of it all.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, if I may, on the west side on your, you're just showing that little white car that's parked there. There's, there's nothing else, just, I mean, there, there's no, I don't see a separate...
Yeah, that's how we made room for the additional stream with, we took out some houses.
No, I'm the, so see the little white car on the right? Is that all that there is on that side?
So that's actually during the parking lot at Posey.
Okay, but we're not adding, adding any trees or any...
Yeah, so you can't really see on the scale of that, but there's a, a small planting strip that has the Ivy in it. So the, yeah, there you go. Just to zoom in enough. So yes, there's, where that wheel stop is, is where the paving stops. And then there's a small strip of landscaping and then the Ivy obviously going up the side of the MSE wall.
Are, are you in that, and I don't, I don't see a schematic of it. Are you reshaping in any way that parking lot that now has equipment on it?
Yes, we are. So it, it gets reconstructed as part of the project. So if you recall, as part of the complicated land transfer arrangement, we're actually providing a nine-and-a-half to 10-foot strip of property. And so the, we see that, it looks like a Prius, I guess. We see that Prius right there. That's actually on JPP property right now. It's actually, the AJ is getting nine-and-a-half feet wider.
Okay.
If that answers that. And then it all gets repaved and a new sidewalk and then street trees along Huntington Avenue.
Okay, that, that's my other question is, are you going to add some trees to it?
Uh, yeah. Can you show the plan overall? You can probably see it. There you go. So this is, this is actually Artichoke Joe's parking lot. And those fancy octagons you see on the foreground, those are tree, street trees. So there's a small triangular, uh, sort of planner at the corners where each of those wheel stops are.
Okay.
And then those other areas are just low ground cover you see coming into Posey.
Okay. When the sidewalk, sidewalk is finished, that'll be ADA width and all those good things. Okay, thanks.
Again, acknowledging and all, I, again, just had, but I think I'm going to answer my own question. If you went not with the smooth retaining wall, Colin, I bet you that's more money.
Lighting?
We tried to send over some slides that showed lighting underneath the pedestrian underpass and the vehicular underpasses. The problem is, they don't translate very well. So I, I'm not even sure we have some of those slides here tonight. Am I correct or am I, I can't remember now. Well, we'll show them to you, but we have to confess that it's all about the lighting. So that's, we mentioned that that's the vehicular underpass. You can change the color. So you could make a green for St. Patrick's Day or something, I suppose, or it's another one I think that's pink. There's orange? And that's within the city's control to change that color and even affect the brightness of it. So that just gives you a feel for it. And then the pedestrian underpass lighting, it's simply enough to say it's, it's a simple strip down the middle. The problem is that they don't depict the underpass very well. It's not very long and it's extremely remarkably wide. It's what, by what? It's 20 feet wide, 35 feet long. So it's not a very long underpass. I know I would be concerned. There, there's an, there's the underpass as it's under construction. You can see, get a better idea of at least the size of it. It's just not very long. I know there'd be concern if it was terribly long and I know this was something that was an issue for Clara from the very beginning. If we make it too long, we make it unsafe. And so clearly, that's not what we did. Oh, also, yeah, thank you. We were all big fans of that yellow that somebody had proposed and we never quite knew where it came from. This is the color the underpasses will be painted. Which is not, you know, which is meant to match the same color as the walls everywhere else. So that was the last thing. Two more things we wanted to talk about briefly. We, we got clear direction from the council about a medallion. We took one sort of brief stab at drawing something and it's, it's not worth showing to you. We'll have to work with staff and with the subcommittee probably to, to really brainstorm some ideas. That's something that can come, I mean, we could do it the day of the ribbon cutting or we can even do it afterwards. We'll make sure that the, uh...
You're not going to come in two weeks.
What? I'm not going to come back in two weeks.
All right.
Not for that, anyway. I might just come back. The, you know, we can, we can build the, the great separation so that there are bolts there for the medallion. And, and that's something we can do at the very end or even literally afterwards. But we, you know, we recognize that it's a signature statement for the city and we want to really take the time to design something and work something out.
Can I ask, can I ask a question probably for Rafael regarding those bolts that are sticking out right now? I mean, those are all like post-tension bars and everything coming out that would have been, I guess, coupled with the, the next two tracks, you know, if, if that were to come or when that was going to come. So how does that get covered or does that get removed and...
So I think what you're referring to is the, you're talking at the underpasses themselves. There's some...
The, the large concrete girder, yeah, and it's got major, major stuff coming out of it.
So, okay, so that's going to, the reason we didn't build those caps in one shot is because we had a shoe fly in the way and it was conflicting with it. So you're right that if we build two more tracks, that's where we would delve in. But we also still have to finish off the pedestrian, uh, walkway and the platform on that side.
So that's not even there yet.
Yeah, so you, you'll actually see, if, if you drive by now, you'll see them actually building platforms to get back up there. There's another whole set of pours they need to do at that location. And then, I mean, it'll be a lot less dramatic than the first time because you're only adding on, you know, four feet of concrete this time. But yeah, that's what those...
Good, look forward to that. Thank you.
So we'll, we'll be, I'm sorry.
Oh, I have one more question and it just came to me. There might be a trade-off in cost of keeping the concrete smooth but coating it with the graffiti, whatever that stuff is called, the, you know, yeah, anti-graffiti painting, you know, so you coat it with paint and that makes it easier to wash off. So that might be a solution both ways. And then the same with the underpassing, underpass, that's an extremely attractive place to put graffiti. Is, can we ask that it be also coated with anti-graffiti paint, sealant?
I think we've actually discussed that.
Yeah, and, and I, I will double-check that, but I believe it currently has called out to have a film on that for graffiti placement.
Okay, great.
At the underpass, not, not at the wall, but you could obviously add that.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I'm sorry, uh, when I say it's already there, I mean on the underpass, obviously. We haven't necessarily finalized that on whatever kind of wall you would build.
Right, it's not built yet, so anyway.
Exactly.
Okay.
And then the last thing we'll mention, we talked before about a mock-up of a couple of sections of this to demonstrate the lighting. We're a few days away from being done. We've spoken with the city staff about how we can best make it possible for the council members to come out individually and take a look at it, especially at night when it really is meant to show off the lighting effect. And we'll work with the staff and figure out the best time for the council members to be there. Generally, we can tell you that it's, it's at the site, but it's removed from the construction area. More than likely, we will always have someone on the site who you can contact and just go and see if you decide to go essentially at the spur of the moment. But we'll figure that out. We, we really definitely want you to see that. That's also where we'll be taking, taking the efforts we want to take to make the cladding, the, what's on the outside of a lighting feature so that it doesn't create additional problems for the city, either by noise or anything else like that.
Can I ask one more?
Sure, go ahead.
Regarding, you know, security and safety and things, is it, is it standard practice to eventually put up security cameras or some, some form of...
Well, yeah.
Yes, so we actually have a large number of security cameras as part of this project. They'll be covering the underpasses as well as the parking area, as well as the access to the platform and the platform itself.
Would there possibly want the, be at least one, you know, shooting at Posey Park?
I don't recall off the top of my head if there's one at Posey. There definitely is if the underpass is approaching Posey. I'd have to double-check. We have a fair number of windows.
That'd be interesting to know because then that would, that would hopefully deter from, you know, from any vandalism. We're all concerned about having such a nice feature that, you know, that, you know, in a moment's notice can be damaged.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double-check what angles those were placed at, at the ramps. I mean, in general, the intent was exactly that, was to discourage, you know, any kind of nefarious activity from taking place. And so they're generally at each of the, either underpasses and/or all the access points. So I'd be very surprised if there isn't some coverage of that, but I could double-check.
Because of the staircase and the ramps, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, you have your answers?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you to the staff, especially for allowing us to get this all on the agenda in such a quick and short period of time. See you soon.